Good morning.
Good morning.
And I told you tomorrow you should have all received a copy of the call, your email. Should have had that friend be there. I do have an extra copy of Tammy, did you get a copy? I guess I'd just like to start off by going through a couple of things I found out there. Again, I mentioned to you on Sunday when I ran into you that there was some beaver dams in your area that I knew was. And if you want the locations on those. It was DD twenty-five, lot one.
Lot one?
Yep, section twenty-six. They were just, just east off from two hundred and thirtieth Avenue. And then the other one was in your area was DD one sixteen. And it was just south of B fifty, section one.
Section one. Willows Prairie.
Uh, that's gonna be in Sherman.
Sherman?
No, 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 no.
Sherman, I know one of the black.
I don't see it on the map or which one it's on.
East or west of Lord Saxon Road?
Yeah, it'd be west of B sixty, two miles.
You probably seen the same one I seen, it's in Kaiser's.
I think it is, Sherman.
Yeah, that'd be Sherman.
Yeah, yeah. I think it's just south of the Black Cap right there, you see it from the Black Cap. Well, I'm hanging out three of them, you can see from the road.
And they're not made out of trees either, are they?
How's that?
They're not made out of trees.
And what I think is, because right there, if you look at that one in section twenty-six of Prairie, there's right in the corner between the ditch and the field, there's a little corner there that has a bunch of brush and shrubs and stuff in it. So I'm assuming that one's got some sticks in it. But the other one down south there, there's no place to do it, that'd drag stuff a long way to get wood on that one, but.
So I know you got everything in our church dead.
How's that?
My uncle's in our church, you got everything dead, they're in a tree growing.
There's, they're, they're clean, about a bucket. The only ditch I really found with a lot of stuff in, that'd be up in Powell's area. It would be, used to be Rogers area, but that'd be joint grade six eight, one thirty-six. And then a lower two miles of that would just, the whole channel was just all the willows. So we got up to the north end. So that one, actually that one there, we will roll over, we won't do anything with it this fall because the willows are in the bottom of the ditch and we use oils this time of the year. For one thing, it's a lot more expensive to use oils if you have a lot, a lot of brush like that. And another thing, we can't spray that in the water. Everything else we have has a label for it, we can't spray and allow us to overspray in the water. Using the oils, we have to stay away.
There's a lot of them. We cleaned it probably ten years ago.
That's a good point, but that might change.
It was full of cottonwoods.
And otherwise, everything looked, you know, it wasn't, nothing really jumped out at me. But I did quote, that was always the way I quote this stuff, is I quote maximum and then the guys who want to do a time materialist, not to exceed the maximum that I have on the quote here. One thing that I've just recently have experienced is we've got like Potiva has already had through the summer, about a seven percent increase on their chemicals. And I just talked, in fact, when I was waiting to come in this morning, I talked with my supplier, Bill Walker. He said that to expect another one, Potiva's gonna jump the prices another close to eight, eight percent. And that's where it's coming from. And the base oil that we use, I knew that was going to happen because I was notified in the spring. That went up three dollars a gallon. By the time it's all done with Potiva, the doggone four, the element four is gonna be up almost a whole ten dollars per gallon. And those are the prices we use in drainage. And I guess I have comparisons here. This year, the total quote, this is what I call the up year, one of the, this side of the county that has the most ditch miles. Total quote's a hundred and nine thousand. As an example, I'll go back to the previous three years when we did the work. The last time I went through that, three years ago, in that same portion of the county, the quote was a one hundred and one, two hundred and fifty dollars. And one hundred and one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars in the actual amount billed when we were done was sixty-three thousand, four forty-two. And the following year, which would be the west half, or the western, north to south, the quote was eighty-five thousand, five hundred, and the actual was forty-seven thousand, two eleven. Now, that take, have to take into consideration that P A K one was under major construction. So we didn't do anything with it that cycle. And now that they've got that completed, I'm not looking at some of those areas that had some concerned farmers.
With more waters, you got a whole bunch of trees.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of trees on there actually was concerned. And with the timing, it's just gonna fit right. I mean, because they just finished that ditch and now it's due to be done next year. Which last year, last, well, I went and looked at it for you, Galen. It, there was some growth there, but it hadn't grown enough to get an effective kill. So whenever we do clean outs or you take trees off or you do a clean out, we like to have at least two years' growth on the trees before we come back in and treat it. Now, if that were to fall out of the rotation, we would just go ahead and do it, say it wasn't due to be done for two years yet. We'd go ahead and do it next year anyway. And then the year previ-, or the year, last year's ditches, the quote was twenty-seven thousand, the actual was twelve thousand, eight thirteen. And that was on the portion of the county, the center third, where it's got the fewest ditch miles. And we actually do, well, H K eight there, Humboldt is the controlling county, so we, we do that ditch with theirs, which is in the same year. And I did, on the quote sheet, on the, on the price sheet, I did like with the Garlon four ultra, which we use, it's actually element four that we use on that. I've already increased the prices on my rate sheet to absorb what Potiva's gonna do in November. Because Walker says it's gonna be a seven point seven percent increase. So I've already tried to work that in so I don't have to come back in and say, hey, this product box is going up again.
I had a question here on this. The first one is sixty-eight dash one thirty-six. The top portion says it includes two thousand feet in Fairbowl County.
Yeah, that was when they cleaned that ditch, that was an agreement that was made with Fairbowl County. That's not as, as critical to do that now because Fairbowl County for, as long as I've been working in this area for forty years, have been hit and miss on maintenance on their drainage ditches. And they've got the, I don't know whether the board just finally decided to start listening to their, their new ditch inspector. They have what they call ditch inspectors in Minnesota, which is supposed to be a go-between between the boards and the landowners. And so far, for one full three-year rotation, they've had us in doing the brush control. And what they've done in the past is they, they do it maybe a year or two, then they try to do something different. Then by the time they get that, us back in, there would be cleanup again. And I think for now, they're gonna be on a regular rotation. And that ditch was actually one that we did work on for them this, this last summer. So, and that's what it was. And you'd have to go back and talk to previous supervisors to see what that agreement was and maybe Marge has got something on it. That was an agreement that was made, that it actually goes up to the, the first road crossing, which is just less than a half mile, probably about a quarter mile.
Okay, yep, I was looking at that on.
Yeah. And I just left that on there for now, you know, just.
So those four in Hancock County, where the Lee County and all, and then four?
Uh, I have to look at my map really down. Marge, maybe you can look. And what I'll do there, I've got it marked on my map, my main map that I've got for the county rotation. And what we do there is, I'll be seeing that board next Monday. And when we do those ditches, those three joint ditches, instead of billing their portion to them, your portion to you, whichever county is the controlling county, I just send one invoice. And then that way, it doubles up the split and everything, it's more confusing for me as well when I start getting payments. It's just easier to do it that way. Then you only have to split one bill instead of having to figure out two. And there's one other joint down there that, that's a little small ditch. Yeah, seven dash one twenty. And that's only about a mile of ditch altogether, that's right down there. Across the seventeen right there. And I'll look at that little, little piece of ditch up there, pal, and get back down. We'll be overlooking this stuff in Palo Alto County next week, so I'll swing by there and take a look at it. I'll get a, I'll give you a call and if you want me to call a landowner, I can, but if you want to just.
Just let me know and we'll talk at that point for that other request, yep.
More than likely, it's probably something that could wait till next year, it's on the schedule for next year.
Yep, I just told him I'd bring it up to you.
Yep, yep.
See what he thought.
Yeah, and I gotta apologize, I'm pretty sure that, that Marge emailed that to me.
That's fine.
Like I said, I get so much garbage email and when you're going through deleting stuff, maybe I hit a button I shouldn't, I'm on the one that you sent me. So. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions or?
Do I have a motion to approve the brush control for coming here?
A motion. Either I have.
Okay.
I'll second it if not.
Motion made by Casey, seconded by Spector. Any discussion? Hearing now, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried, five zero.
All right, as always, I will call Marge and she'll shoot out an email to everyone on board that were off their work. And then I always tell the county sheriff as well. It's more critical this time of the year than the rest of the year because you got hunting seasons opening and concerned farmers that maybe not so concerned are off there, they're concerned we might be out there shooting their peavents or their deer. That's, that's the oils I was talking about, so you guys, you gotta mix up the oil. And that's why with the, with the price and all the chemicals are going up. I mean, I, myself think that some of these companies are use, still using the COVID fiasco to raise prices because I, they're, like I was talking to another supervisor down in Pocahontas County, I explained to him that, you know, these oils are gonna go up and they're all petroleum-based. And, you know, the, he told me how much lower the barrel of oil was going for right now, but the prices were still going up. It went from a hundred and something to seventy-eight is what he was saying. So somebody, I think it's being used as an excuse in some cases.
Are you gonna spray road ditches though too, would you see them, or are you just gonna wait until, because you're just spraying for cricks now, right?
Yeah, see, the thing is with your drainage ditches, we do a lot of work in Minnesota through the summer months because I think I mentioned this to, to this board before, that they have what's called the governor's law up there. Where that back in two thousand eighteen, as of November first of two thousand eighteen, this was a law that was written by the governor and it went through when they, every drainage ditch in, in the state of Minnesota has to have, the drainage ditches have to have a rod set aside on each side, a rod of sod is what they call it, or set aside. And I guess on some of the, the other ditches there, in fact, there's one we ran into this year that was just annexed in, a creek that was annexed in. And then like on the rivers and streams, there's actually, has to be fifty foot on each side. And with that, that's why we'll come in, we'll work in Iowa to start with in the spring until the crop gets too big, you know, there's always places you could go, but then you run into crop and then you got, you got serpentine in. But that's just, that's not efficient to go out there and have to go back to all the spots that have crop. So what we do is we work in Iowa from March or whatever we get going, depending on snow, until the crop gets too tall for us to scrabble it. And then we switch everybody up to doing drainage in Minnesota, our brush crews. And because there's road along each side of the ditch. And then when the crop starts coming off out, we come back into Iowa and we get access, so.
So I had you sprayed beside Laverne, Saxon, Black Cap, right beside mom's place. There's all those trees a few years ago, they're all back again.
Who's that?
Spray cars for my moms.
Okay.
One fifty street, wherever it goes from one fifty street and all Laverne, Saxon, Black Cap on the east side of the road. There's a lot, they're all cottonwoods because of that big cottonwood at the end of the lane. And all that seed's blowing about right over to there.
Yeah, yeah. Cottonwoods and willows are really prolific and you gotta stay after them. But that'll be, I think that's on the schedule, on the rotation for next year already, yeah.
So it's about two years ago and you had, two, three years ago, you had the family to deal.
Yeah, yeah.
Perfect.
Now, I've gotta talk to Doug, there's a couple of nose sprays out there too that are kinda getting away about, Dr. Doug Miller, about that. The policy is if they want a nose spray, they can sign the nose spray, but then they have to take care of themselves. But there's a, I'm not gonna mention any names at the boardroom here, but there's a few people on that area that have nose sprays, but the trees are getting out of control.
Doug, I mean, where I live?
Well.
I mentioned it to Doug too.
Yeah. Because that's right in the, the form when they sign it, you know, okay, we won't spray it, but you're required to. And if you don't, then they're gonna go ahead and do it themselves and, or do it ourselves.
There's pretty big trees on there.
Yeah. So anyway, I don't want to pick on anybody.
Thank you for not picking on them.
All right then, I'll, I'll be in touch when we get going and.
Appreciate it.
I'll be back to you, pal, as soon as I look at that.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you.
We're up to with both of me, drain four twenty-eight completion.
Good morning. Got a couple of copies there for the records. We just all have an electronic copy of this as well. This is the Drainage District Four, lateral twenty-eight tile repair. Was the lower portion lowered. There was some issues up in this area of being able to tile to that main tile that was there, went in, lowered it, crushed the old one. Has since been completed, we measured up the areas of damage as they are displayed on the map here. So in that packet is first, the certification of contract completion as is required by the Drainage Code four sixty-eight, one oh one. That is the certification of completion. Second then is the completion report that outlines, the project was bid this April. Contract was awarded to Holland Contracting. The original contract price there of two hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred dollars. This was the project that, when we went out and did the investigation before construction, there was a significant distance further than what was drawn on the original plats. That was that change order for additional pipe of fifty-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars. Actual contract quantities, when it was all said and done, there was a decrease then of three thousand, four hundred, fourteen dollars and eighty-three cents for a total project dollar of three hundred and forty-five thousand, seventy-seven dollars and seventeen cents, of which ninety percent has been paid with just the retainage left due to the contractor. We have also tabulated the damages as they appear on the map for all of the landowners. This report will be sent to the landowners on whom the work was performed and the notice will need to be published in the local paper. So that is to say, not everyone in the district gets notified, just those that, publicly, they all get noticed, but just those that got work performed of it, get the actual notice and the petition of report. That hearing would need to, the completion hearing would need to be held at least ten days from today, or from the acceptance of the report, rather. Marge and I talked tentatively, we weren't sure that we could make the fifteenth. Marge didn't think we could make the fifteenth work. The next then would be the twenty-second, November twenty-second at ten AM, I believe, Marge is the time you suggested. At that hearing, the landowners will have the opportunity to object to any of the figured damages or any of the work as it was performed. I was just out there in that area Friday. In my opinion, it looks, looks really good. The land restoration, the, the pipe outlet is clear and it's, I know we don't have much water in the bottom of the ditch right now, but it's got over a foot and a half of free outlet into the, into the ditch bottom. One thing that is also worth noting is that the damages on this, because it is also emptying into four, these are just the damages on this, this project. The damages for the ditch repair that is also going on will be separate and as part of that project. So if any landowner asks, these are, these are just the ones that pertain to lateral twenty. Any questions?
First, we have to have a motion to accept the report, correct?
Uh, yes.
I would make that motion.
Mr. Spector makes the motion, accept the report, do I have a second?
No second.
Is that laws?
Mm-hmm.
I second by laws. Any discussion on the report? Hearing now, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Next, we need a motion to set the dates and time, which would be ten o'clock on the twenty-second. Mr. Spector makes the motion. Do I have a second? I'll second his motion. Any discussion on the completion hearing? You've heard nothing?
I have heard, I have heard nothing.
You're satisfied?
Uh, in fact, like I said, I was out there Friday, taking a look at the ditch and the tile while I was there. The area that was originally petitioned for because of the inability to private tile, it, to my knowledge, is all, from what it looks like, it's all now been patterned tiled into, into the system, so.
And there's free board on the outlet?
Yep. I, I, I mean, I, I would assume, just from the amount of tile that I saw go in, take that as satisfaction of the, of the work. Uh, but yes, there is, there's free board. The, the surface restoration, it's all black dirt back put on top. Just gently mounted to, to allow for settlement, but nothing that's, nothing that's.
Very easily farmable.
Yes, oh yeah, it, it's very traversable, it's a very, the job very well done, in my opinion. The, the only thing I would say in any form negatively of how the project went was that it was at times difficult to get pipe because the manufacturers are so bottled up and so behind. But that's not any of the contractors, you know, that's not their fault or.
Yeah, Holland was willing to pipe quite a bit.
Yeah, but other than that, they did, they did a great job. Yeah, not much more to say. The only, the one additional comment to the project at, at large is that with this, there was a reclassification based on private tiling that it put in, and they're all private main. That is not yet completed. That'll be done for the, in the spring when all of those assessments are figured. So we'll, we'll have that completed by then, but that's for now and, and at the completion hearing, those numbers won't yet be figured.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Thank you all.
You can't leave already, you can't be done.
I, well, I mean, I, I mean, I think so.
Really? Hey, I had a question on DD four a little bit ago.
Okay.
When your approximate time, do you think it's gonna be completed?
Um. Surely within the month because the, the completion date is the first of December.
So the completion hearing will be in early, should be the last of December?
It'd be, it'd probably, if we didn't have a problem messing with the holidays and stuff like that, elsewise.
Otherwise, it would be January?
Yeah, otherwise, in January, yeah.
Well, because you'll have to put your report together, bring it to us, approve it, set a time and date, so.
Right.
I wouldn't be surprised if it was this year.
There's, I mean, we could, we're pretty well up on damage measurements and everything like that. So we could, we could turn it around pretty quickly once everybody was, was satisfied. We're, I talked to the contractor just yesterday, working on scheduling a project walkthrough with them. There are some things on punch lists, not, not a lot, or not like significant areas, but there are some areas where there's some additional grading that's gonna need to be done for some traversable areas. Basically just areas that were already high, that spoiled and get pushed far enough out. But it's only, what, pal, a couple hundred feet at a, at a time?
Yeah.
Or a curve on a ditch, it's not, it's not.
Small spots.
Big, long runs. There's debris and rocks and things that they have to pick up yet, they're finishing up placing the rip rep, I think as we speak.
I know, they were reporting that yesterday.
So, uh, as, as far as any of the excavation and the bulk of the work, I'm, I'm very happy with their, their performance, what it looks like in, in, I would say, over ninety percent of it. It's just getting that last little ten percent here in the last month to.
The final touch.
Really, to, to polish it to where it needs to be.
You're at the man cave or not, done leveling?
No, there, there's still, and there's level and work that needs to be done. And from their own admission, there was, there were some sections that, uh, they wished the, dozer operator had had a little bit more training. But they, they're aware of all of that, they're not.
They'll be coming back.
Yeah, they're not, they're not counting themselves done or mobilizing out.
Is there any specific areas you're talking about? Because I've had some people.
I just gotta ask my, my four or five different farmers if they were gonna come back and level more.
Who is that? Because I've talked to a couple here recently, I mean, talked to Tyler about two of them already, but I don't know if they're the same or not.
I'll get back to you.
Yeah, and they, you just.
Yeah, that's fine.
Call me with names or anything like that. We plan on walking the whole, we're driving, driving the whole thing with them.
Okay.
Um, to make sure that, that all parties are, are satisfied. But if you have specific instances that you would like pinpoint addressed, absolutely get that to me.
Well, if they're gonna do it, then.
Right.
We'll wait until after their. I'm complaining, I'm just making sure that you're.
Yeah, yeah, no, we're, we're, uh, I think they're feeling the crunch and we're, we're on top of it with them, making sure that they.
Because it ends December.
December first is the, is the completion date there. I, I don't, from my perspective, I don't see any concerns with them hitting that. They just, a nice reminder to them is always preferred rather than getting mad after the fact, so. All right?
Yep.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
Marge, we are up to, I think, requests.
I guess I got the first one, number fifty-one, HK eight. It's uh, Matt Kellmer called it in, there's a west bank, open ditch washed out, uh, so that'd be over to the west, so I'll have T and M do that.
Go for it.
Then I got number, that one's fifty-one, this was fifty-three, uh, section twenty-nine, Sherman, Chad Burdy, and on a triple E, take care of that one. Say broken tile, twenty-four inch broken tile.
Yeah, I had two here. Um, number fifty-two is lead yard, section one, for Dwight Eichenberger. Roger, do you have, did you fill this out? Do you have a phone number for him?
I didn't fill it out, but I think I probably got a phone number for it.
And then that's a sixteen inch broken tile, and then fifty-four, Lincoln, section eleven, Dwayne David's, uh, broken tile, and it's flagged, so. Those are my two.
I have a super blade request, take care of it.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second.
I can get the phone number.
For the floor, all those, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or she carries hands. I don't have them in my phone, but they gotta go down somewhere.
Okay, if you can get that to me, it'd be great. Yeah, lead yard, section one. And you got Raisel written on here, have they already done it, or?
I don't think, yeah, I don't know anything about it.
Oh, okay.
But Marge, do you know? Raisel written on?
On fifty-two, is that already completed?
I think he was out there in the field.
Okay.
Raisel was doing filing for his book. He might have talked to me and I forgot her name.
Smile this way. You smiling, really?
I'm just smiling, that's me, nice guy.
Happy boy?
I am.
That's good.
We are up to discussion and time with our auditor.
Okay, Lou asked to come in to give you an update on the sheriff's office roof project.
The rooftop units? We're having some issues getting controls from train itself, is what they're telling us. I don't know the extent of it at this point, but I want to keep you guys abreast that there's probably gonna be some issues coming. Our control guys, same ones that did all our controls here, have a prop, have, what's the word I'm looking for? They, they're already putting controls over here, part of the bid. There might be uh, like a back charge to the contractor, and uh, we have to give the control guys some more money to get control of these units, just trying to keep you abreast of on the whole situation. And we don't know the extent of it, I mean, we're not talking fifty thousand dollars by no means. Um, I don't know, but I believe there's something funny going on between the engineer and the contractor. There's something that just is not adding up. For the engineers to start putting nominal values on products, uh, it don't, something's not right here. And why these parts weren't ordered when the project was approved, they're giving all kinds of excuses, so I'm just trying-
Are they not expecting to be able to have them in time for the completion?
Well, completion's out the window, cause this was supposed to be back in the spring. Uh, but I don't know, they, they told us there's a ship date of eleven nineteen, but the way the email stated is that they don't believe that's even gonna happen. So why they put a date on it, I don't know, I'm just trying to keep you guys informed that something is gonna go sideways.
One of the last emails we got said, you know, this project was supposed to be completed in May, and the last time we talked with Roger, he said that the back net cards have just been ordered. Okay, if this project was supposed to be completed in May, why are we just now ordering cards? There, there's something funny going on.
And then the other thing was, he goes, well, we were under the impression that they were coming with the units. Well, when you're talking this scope of work, you don't assume nothing.
Still, if that was the case, they still should've known they should've ordered them.
Yes. And if we have to do a D-DUP, now they're trying to tell us that these cards that are in there are only X amount, and-
And I mean, I'm talking pittance, like two hundred and forty dollars, you can't buy any piece of electronic-
We're doing, we're doing a little fishing because we think they're trying to pull the wool on us on this one.
Because Chris can, our control guy, that I have one hundred percent faith in that he's not gonna steer us in the wrong direction, is saying he can retrofit these units for seventeen hundred bucks a unit, right?
Yeah, that was the number.
Seventeen hundred bucks a unit. Basically put his controls on, forget the back net card. That's why I'm telling you this.
Well, why would we have to do that? Because we had a contractor, our engineer hired.
That's where the back charge would come in. I don't have a, we hired Burglin and Cram.
Right.
Burglin and Cram hired that modus because they didn't do rooftop units.
But we go back to Burglin and Cram and say, hey, this is your proposal, why, why did you deviate from it?
Yeah, and that's, I've already been in contact with Doug and letting know this is not right. The one, the one variable in this, what they're gonna throw at your face, and that's why I'm having or letting you know this, is that if we go with Chris's controls at some point, we will not have variable speed compressors, which means, instead of the compressor coming on and shutting off, it's gonna, it might come up to twenty-five percent, it might come up to fifty percent, or run at a hundred percent. That's what their claim is gonna be. In the real world, having economizers on them units, you can pull in fifty degree air and not even run the compressor.
Right.
So your savings is gonna come using the economizer. And when it's eighty, ninety degrees outside, that compressor ain't gonna variable rate anyways, it's gonna kick on, you kick off. So, just so you don't think we're trying to get Chris in there, we're not. I just have more faith in Chris than what this engineer, cause he has a title to say.
So the, the current stuff they should've put in already, that should've already been done, that would have variable-
Yes.
Adjustment?
If we, if we get the back net cards, that's the whole thing.
If it should.
But what, what savings are we losing because we don't, can't even run them the way they need to be run?
Well, the compressors are designed to run it, either on, old style, on, off, are variable.
The new ones are variable, some of them, I don't think all the units are variable, I think some.
Some are, I think-
The larger ones.
Cause I think it's the five ton or-
The five ton.
That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we're not talking, you're a pittance-
Right.
In this actual savings of what you would see.
But we're still doing some digging, so no offense.
I mean-
So they didn't tell you what kind of controls they were, would they be Honeywell or some-
What, Chris's?
Yeah.
Uh, I believe some of his are Honeywell, I, I can't speak exactly, but it would be the same automatic logic as what the, most of the controls would be. Instead of this back net card, it, we started, this whole fight started in the conference room over at the sheriff's office when we had like the pre-construction meetings, and we said, hey, we want Chris's controls. Well, right away, that threw up a red flag with this engineer and Jonathan, and we looked at each other then and thought, what's going on here? Because he said it would void the warranty on the units. Well, right now, we have ten units over there running on nothing but our old thermostat, so the warranty's voided now, or now it's accepted, cause you can't get the ship. So it's, it's been a mess the whole time, that's why I'm just, I just stopped in, so you guys are-
We really don't like to hear that.
Well, I know you don't, but you need to.
Cause how many months ago would have that been? What, pre-construction meeting?
It was last March.
Yeah, no, I think it was before March, more because, yeah, I think that was back in the fall, like November, almost a year ago.
So we sat in on one of them?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you think we need to get everybody together and have it put around the agenda and discuss it, or we?
Um, I, I don't think that's a bad idea, I'd like to wait maybe a week until after the nineteenth, cause that's what they said the ship date was, so I'll give them, it's only a couple weeks when we're talking-
The twenty-second would be our next meeting after the nineteenth.
I, that's up to you guys, I'm just trying to make you aware of what's going on, I can send out an email and say, hey, supervisors want you here, you go.
I'd say let's wait till after nineteen.
Yeah.
Plus that gives us time to try to figure out the actual cost of those back net cards, cause the, like I say, it's a pittance what they're offering, if we do, have to do a D-DUP from them, they're talking like two hundred and fifty-five dollars, well, no.
And anytime you do a D-DUP, it's always in favor of the contractor, so, I mean, I don't know if they think they're trying to pull the wool over all our eyes, but I've been down this road a hundred times, this is not, it's not acceptable, I mean.
I think we should have him here, like Zedani, um, what do you guys think as far as time, twenty-second, twenty-ninth?
Would you say ship?
No, ship date is eleven nineteen supposedly.
No, that's a Saturday, it ain't gonna be here but two days.
No, I'm not saying it'd be here, but at least we'll have a confirmation on the shipping.
We'll know, we'll know it's coming.
If it actually shipped.
Right.
But I think, I mean, it's no different than the units. First, it started off in June, and then it went to July, and then it was August, October, and we got some in October.
So even if it does ship on the nineteenth, we wouldn't have it, but we might know when it'd be arriving, so it still might be good to talk to them.
Yeah, because we can, we'll have control with them back net cards. My fear is they're not gonna be here for over a year, so what did we really save by doing this? That's my concern.
And if they do that, they should've been upfront with this from the beginning. And I don't feel like they were somewhere.
Yeah, there's a few things that are-
Kind of have to get it tucked away, it was our money that we're spending.
Mm-hmm.
That's the other reason I'm here, so you guys are not, I mean-
Yeah, I don't appreciate audits, if we do something wrong, but we do everything right, and we still get audited, I'm comfortable.
Right, that's why I'm just-
Yeah.
Letting you know that this is not a smooth transition on top of the road.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Anything else for Willie?
How you doing on the sheriff's building?
It's insulated. The insulation is done. Just, we're, we were at the lumberyard getting something for locks, so people can't get in there. And the door is still a couple weeks out, the walk-in door, we're hoping to start on the garage doors here. Maybe-
We got those there.
Garage doors are here, waiting for the walk-in door, sorry, I didn't clarify that.
You got the door for the UBC building setting up?
The south door, yes, it's sitting there, yep.
Got everything ready to put that in?
I'm sure if we were there, it would be ready, just missing two lavers.
Anything else?
I hope not, that's enough for a while.
Thanks, Jason.
Thanks.
Anything else from the auditor?
Yeah, okay, so, um, remember, sorry, I just cut this. When I talked to you, might have to change something, I guess, you might forget that bit, it was fine, but um, when I talked to you about talking to E and, ESMS to open up the machines to see if there was modems in them machines, so, um, I talked to ESMS, had a really nice conversation with them, and she went over from start to finish, um, how the machines are made and what happens with these, so they're all made in Omaha, Nebraska. None of the machines are made with modems in them, they're all certified, completely certified from top to bottom. In order to get a modem put in an ESMS machine, you have to apply for another contract, you have to get a contract to have it put in, then that has to be certified again, and then that has to be approved again, they're not just automatically, then you have to have a contract with the US Cellular Company that's gonna supply the, the network, or whatever it's called, for that modem. If we were to open up the machine and go in there, our warranty would be no, and we would know I could have a warranty on it, but, um, she said that there's really no reason to, because, uh, you can see on the printout on our machines, when we go in and test our machines, on the top of the sheet, it will say modem not detected, and so when we did our public test, we looked at every single one, and every single one said modem not detected. She said there's no brains in the actual machine, the brains is in the USB stick, so the USB stick is what's recording all the data, and that's where the information is, it's not actually in the machine itself. Um, and then if none of our laptops are hooked to the internet, have any internet capability whatsoever, we just have one computer, um, in the election center, that, by the end of the night, that we transfer that data from that computer to the secretary of state's office. The computer that we download the information on does not have any internet capability or access, so it's just that one that transmits the data, and then once that data is, is sent, then before it's approved, we, um, compare what we sent to what's recorded to make sure the condition is set. So, any questions about any of that?
So we're not gonna do anything really?
No, because it would, it would, we'd have no warranty on machines if we opened them up, and she said there's, there's no reason why they would guarantee that there's a modem in there, and if any, if there is one in there, we have no contract, somebody would be going to prison, because it's against the law to have a modem in there without having a contract. Okay, so, and then, um, election, um, we finished our training for our poll workers. Um, Friday, we're open till five o'clock for election, Saturday, we're required to be open eight hours, and they have to be open till at least five o'clock, so our hours will be nine to five on Saturday, so everybody can come vote. Um, we'll be delivering equipment Friday and Monday to the polling locations, and then Tuesday- And then Tuesday, they open at seven, all the workers will be there at six. Um, our office, we will be here, I will be at the election, the plum event center at six, and the rest of us will be here, the rest will be here in the office, and others will be here till, I don't know. Any questions about that? Like we're up to, I, I don't know how many they've had today, but yesterday when we left, we were like at fourteen eighty.
Fourteen eighty?
So, about fifteen.
Thirteen eighty, not confusing myself, almost fourteen hundred, so thirteen.
That's still a lot.
Yeah. So, unless you have questions, that's all we have.
Next week, no meeting, I'll see you for the eighteen.
Next week, yeah.
Anything exciting?
And then we have voluntary annexation and classification hearing at ten o'clock for delete eighty-two.
Right.
And then they'll have the update from Cassius County North Center and update from secondary room. Second affairs update, that's it so far.
Martin must've sent one of them to me eighty-two?
Yeah, she must've sent those out in the last week, I think.
Yeah, I think so.
Cause I can read your calls, what is it?
Right now my legs are kind of watering together.
Mr. Stecker?
I did not have any board meetings, um.
Casey?
I didn't have any meetings, I just had people calling about the pipe and some questions and some drainage down the back lawn. They're still waiting for the contractor to come fix their stuff, they're just wondering if it's gonna get down this wall. So, I called Mr. Wrightson yesterday, he assured me that they should be there by week. I had a few meetings last week, my first meeting was Care Connections in Northern Iowa. Our budget balance was two million eight hundred sixty-four thousand five hundred twenty-two dollars and two cents. And the second payment for the employees will be covered earlier than normal, cause they wanted to get that. Uh, so, probably November you'll get that. Had two mobile crisis calls to Cassius County, twenty-five calls to the talk line between Cassius, Cassiusworth and Winnebago. The Thomas Bellas, the actor, the true story on the McFarland. He, he spoke about almost thirty-eight hundred students two weeks ago. Um, on March twenty through the twenty-fourth, Cassius County, it's gonna be Cassius County, they're gonna hold a four-day class for, um, any law enforcement on mental health. And I offered them into that building or this building, but they're gonna talk and see what can work better for them. We had a long discussion, exception to policy. So, if, if any person goes to an ER for mental health, wherever their address is, that's who pays for that call. If, we have three things they have to be, first of all, they have to do an application. Second thing is they can't have any insurance. And the third thing is they have to be a hundred fifty percent below poverty level for us to pay. So, there was one in Mary Greeley, in Ames, and two in Avery McKenna, in Sioux Falls, that had addresses to our region, and each one of them is missing one piece of that puzzle. So, we had lengthy discussion on whether we should pay it or not. But Avery McKenna Hospital is affiliated with the Will Seale Hospital, which is in our region. So, we didn't wanna burn it, register, so we come to the conclusion that we're gonna pay half of the bill and then not pay the other half until we get all pieces of the puzzle together, so. That was a lengthy discussion on that. Um, we had a special request for, uh, child growth therapy, is a child, a mental health psychiatrist, that's gonna open up in Spencer. And he was asking for some money, just for some equipment to open, open up. So, we did grant him that, under the request that he tries to hire another child psychologist for this area over here. For people that can't, um, can't go to Spencer, so hopefully that works out.
What kind of equipment do they use?
Um, it was like.
I'm just curious.
Therapy toys, mask, like a drumstick, a play kitchen, it's just stuff like that for children. A small refrigerator. Some trainings, some, some books, so. It was like eight thousand three hundred thirty-five dollars, so we did grant him that, hopefully. As we always say, Care Connections, we can take care of, have as children, we hopefully will have to take care of methodologists. And then Tuesday night, I had a meeting of any. Talked about outdoor warning sirens for these, for the outlying towns, and Chris is working on some grants for that. Talked about buying, uh, new trailer for the UTV, cause the old trailer won't fit on it, we got a quote from, I used to trade sales, um, but still didn't make any decision on that yet. Our multi-jurisdictional, jurisdictional hazard mitigation plans to me, needs to be updated, and that's probably looking at a cost of forty thousand dollars to do that. Um, so, also table that till the next meeting. She did get a grant for the drone for forty-eight thousand. Um, we're having a budget meeting in December, she's looking at buying some portable walls and TVs for the ELC. Uh, she has trainings in a building, December twelfth, Alert Iowa Training, January sixteenth, seventeenth, February sixth and seventh, February eighteenth and nineteenth, um, just several different trainings in the building. And then I had a nine-one-one meeting after that. Um, just Don, I just gave you this, except they, um, three more thousand dollars in, in radios statewide for grant. Um, so, they're gonna give out the second round of radios to the EMS and fire departments. But some have not, uh, installed the first round yet. So, we're gonna wait and not get any more radios out to them people till they get their first radios installed. There's a new, it's called Prepared Light nine-one-one video sharing software that we're gonna buy. And so, like, if, if you're at an accident or a fire or a domestic, you can, you can text nine-one-one and they'll ask you to start videoing and all your E P S and your camera, or you know, you pop up and give video to the dispatchers, so they can see what's going on. Um, and, and, and the screen will be black and the camera on the phone, so people don't know that it's, that you're videoing. And, and it's something they don't need to see over here, they can shut it off too, but, but you will be sent a text to ask you whether you would like to video or not.
That brings up a good point, um, when we just had our election worker training, um, we told them that to text nine-one-one, we talked about security, because hectic right now, so we went over security and what to do, we'll have a de-escalated situation. And talked about texting nine-one-one, that they actually may prefer, because if they're getting a whole bunch of calls, you may be able to text them information that they haven't gotten yet. Well, somebody from Sweet City said that her, um, nine-one-one calls do not go to Cassius County, they go to Minnesota. And I thought that.
They were working on that, yeah, yeah.
It is, it is finally solved.
Right, yeah, we did have an update on that.
Okay, 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 sorry, you didn't have, I was just asking, okay.
That was out of the exchange of their Northeast.
So, so if somebody at the Sweet City polling location would text nine-one-one, it will not come to the.
Right, it was Stevens Exchange.
Okay.
And the Sweet City and.
Okay, thank you.
It only took six months.
Thank you.
Um, and then we're still having problems with people putting signs on their house. So, we're gonna send another one or two over again. Some cities have ordinances where they're required, but whether you're gonna start, um, pushing and fighting for it or not, that's still up there. And then I had a hazmat meeting on Wednesday afternoon, um, hazmat update, they had one still in Mason City. They had a train drill going over by Hampton. It was on the agenda about the CO2 pipeline, and so the hazmat director talked about that. Says it's non-toxic, but it's gonna be caused for frostbite in seconds is what the real big danger is, he says. The EPA, DNR, there's no regulations for this pipeline, he said. But what they, what they wanna, there's gonna be some money available for SCBA's and gas monitors. And they just want the fire department to stay up on that and try to, when this money starts being available, that will be applied for it. Um, they're thinking about buying a Ray Mod analyzer. I think I've talked about this before, where they could just stick it up to like this plastic bottle and they could immediately read what's inside of it. Any, any plastic thing or anything they could, like they have a, or something, they could stick this up there and immediately give a read out of what it is. Now, they have to take a sample, drive it to Iowa City to get a testing. I don't know, it's almost fifty thousand dollars for this, it's gonna be calibrated every year, so. And they're wondering, you know, all these counties got this fentanyl money, if that's something that they could use towards purchasing.
Would they go check fentanyl with the I G secured custody?
Well, if it's, if it's ground up in a powder, it will read that also.
It will, not just liquids.
No, not just liquids. What did they do on that day, find out what's up? So, that was about, that was into that. Thursday, Phil and I would talk to one of the businesses here in town, had a bunch of questions on the EMS boat, we're gonna talk to them. On Friday, uh, Sheriff's Office, Police Office, hers, um, City of Elgonon, myself, Nettie Renshaw, I met with Haley Keane, the new mental health advisor, see how that was going. And she's taken over a hundred and twenty calls and she says, she figures she saved up circa fifty and sixty hours of manpower time while she's waiting. Um, so, it seems like she's really, it's really, it's really going good, like she's been out to several businesses, they talked to the HR, and they've even been calling her, hey, we have an employee that's de-escalated, how do we handle it? Several calls from, from all three of the schools. And there's different situations, how should we handle this, what should we do, so it sounds like she's really a good asset so far.
That's good.
Maureen had her at the HR meeting for, um, Cassius County Health Development, I was there and she had to through that.
Yeah, so, it's funded for two years, and I guess, you know, she's gonna collect it back and.
I had an economic development meeting last Tuesday. Uh, Maureen's got no way left working anymore, Linda retired. She's gonna retire, I should say she has. You know if anybody needs a job. That, they're looking for somebody, uh, not a lot, a lot new with economic development. No gas station for sure. Went to Lone Rock one night with EMS, uh, pretty good attendance. Went to Fenton the next night, and there was, what if you went to Fenton more than Lone Rock? He said there's like eighteen of them, but they kind of take care of Lone Rock.
And they're, they're real aged.
Mud Yard had twelve, fourteen there, and they have no EMS at all right now, so. Lot of good discussion, lot of questions. Tonight is Elgonon again?
Yes, yeah.
And tomorrow night is Burke?
And I think that'll be done, right?
Then I think we're done, so. If you're bored, come to Elgonon. Last night at Elgonon, I had three people there that I'm too concerned. The whole UBC building. Um, the other thing is Martin sent an email out, if you're wanting to meet with T R P Logistics on the Summit Garden Pipeline, if you want to meet with them sometime, there's a question on you, Casey. Talk to Martin, set up a time.
Oh, and I did get a call yesterday morning. The pit must be realistic, you're gonna be almost, I'm pretty sure of that, but I didn't hear, hear the day I talked to somebody. This person said it's worse than it's ever been.
There was a warm up, so it sounded too, so it could've came on yesterday.
I heard they turned it back over to EPA, we did that.
EPA or the DNR, they're not gonna touch it.
The one lady that gave us the runner on that day?
Yeah.
She was glad to give back her letter.
Wow, that's not good.
No, that's not good at all. Oh, and I did, uh, I did forget to mention that the hazmat, I talked about the electric fire truck, when we talked about CO2 pipeline. Too many dollars.
That just sounds funny to me, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and then you'll have a long fire that.
Check to bring a portable generator out.
Yeah, you'll bring a diesel generator out to charge it up when the fire lasts more than two hours.
We got a department head meeting on Thursday?
Let me look.
Anything you want brought up in department head meeting? And safety meeting on Friday, if you wanna go.
I mean, you know what today is.
The first.
So, Friday, oh, Thursday.
Thursday morning? Anything else coming forward in Cassius County?
Tammy, is there, I was just thinking this, is there any way to share some of this out? Like, the fact that they say no modem detected, some of this other stuff.
Well, who's ever watching the tape, is there at all?
Well, yeah, but is there anything else we can do as far as radio or anything like that?
Well, she said that she'd be willing to get us something in writing if we wanted to.
Like a press release type thing?
Well, no, not a press release, because they're just the company that makes them, so. But, I mean, she could give us something that we could hand out.
Or if somebody called in, you could say, hey, you know.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was kinda thinking, just to have handy.
The more you wanna get questions.
Yeah, plenty of something like yourself, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, but she did say that she could, we're also thinking about doing a Facebook page, because the Secretary of State saw this as weekly information that they send us, they can put Twitter, Facebook, your Facebook page, whatever. We don't use any of those, because when I started, we were told not to, that it wasn't a good idea, but now they're recommending that we do, so we can get out more information. So, I don't really have any stuff thinking about that, I don't really want to think about that.
Yeah.
They don't have, the stuff that they send us isn't for the website, it's for like social media platforms, so.
Do you have a motion to the jury? Motion by flat, second by law?
Yep.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion Gary, we are here.